I'd like to call the March 14th Brandon Select Board Meeting to order. It's their motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So moved.
Second.
Make changes to the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And approved. Election of Select Board Officers for taking nominations for the Select Board Chair. Do I hear any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Seth Hopkins.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Seth gets his gavel back.
See that? What did you realize?
Thank you. And thanks to the voters for the budget approval. That was excellent. We appreciate that. And congratulations to all who were reelected to the Board seats. And you guys for sticking around in your long-term chairs. That's great. Is there a motion? Is there a nomination for Vice Chair of the Select Board?
Nominate Tracy Wyman.
Second.
Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Tracy Wyman as Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a nomination for Clerk of the Select Board?
I don't know any Brian Coolidge.
Oh, second.
Are there any other nominations?
We've all had our hand up.
Any other nominations? None heard? All in favor of Brian Coolidge as Board Clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Maybe.
Well done.
Alright, so we have some folks in the room here. Thank you for attending. We have some folks on Zoom. As far as this agenda goes, it is lengthy. They used legal-sized paper to get it to us this time. But a lot of this is stuff that we do as a matter of routine after the town meeting every year. So I am going to ask if there's any objection to building a consent agenda consisting of items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 11, 12, and 14. Any objections to taking all of those as a consent agenda? I did check with the Town Manager on 11 and 12. If anybody's got a question about the warrants, we could do those beforehand.
I'll make a motion to take consent agenda on those.
Alright.
One second.
Okay, motion from Mr. Wyman and a second from Mr. Markowski to take items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 11, 12, and 14 on the posted agenda as a consent agenda. Any objection? If not, ready to vote, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, we've turned right along. Then we're at to number nine, the Town Manager's report. Mr. Atherton.
So a couple of things I'd like to start with that are on my report. If you guys noticed that we've got a nice new suspended ceiling in this room with some new lighting. I think the ceiling is great. It tones the noise down a little bit and it looks great. And one other thing I wanted to show you is while our guys were down from plowing in their spare time, they decided to, they had to put new motor mounts in the wood chipper and they decided to take it apart and sandblast it and repaint it and we put new decals on it too. So it's just nice to see that these guys are taking so much pride in what they have in the shop and it looks brand new.
That's fantastic. I've got some limbs down over my yard if you'd like to bring it up. Practice with it.
We'll have a meeting on the side.
That's great.
So it's just great to see how, you know, the pride that our Highway Department takes in what they're doing and it's really, it's noticed. Rest of my report. I've updated the local emergency management plan, which is right here, for its annual submission to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the state for approval. Not much has changed since last year other than local and regional contacts, basically is all that's changed in that one. Attended an RRPC meeting to discuss the vulnerable population section of the emergency management plan, which is very helpful as there were folks from most of the regional entities like Biata or the Rutland Regional Medical Center, et cetera, to answer questions and discuss protocol for when these services are needed. We're still prepping bid docs for the Arnold District Road Culvert replacement and do hope to have this posted by the end of March. I will have to meet with a landowner actually for temporary easement while we're doing the project. DPW used their time today. I just showed you with the wood chipper, which is great. I've sent an invitation to attend the March 28th Select Board Meeting to residents that live on the section of Union Street that we're going to be replacing sidewalk and curb for a presentation that's from Du Bois and King and to provide an opportunity for question and answers for those folks. So that'll be at the next Select Board Meeting. We had a sewer issue on Park Street. Discovered that a couple of properties were still connected to the old sewer main. Mike knows a little bit about that. There were some things that were overlooked. They were connected to stuff but not the proper lines. This has been corrected and they're now connected to the new main. And this is all, should be reimbursed through Segment Six Project as it was part of the project that wasn't completed. So, so far, VTrans has agreed to do that. I need to have a conversation with them about the folks that called originally to say they have a sewer complaint to make sure that we can cover that for them. The landowners should be on under that. Rec Report. Baseball signups are happening now for grades pre-K through six. John Gilmour will be performing live at the Brandon Town Hall on March 17th. This is a partnership with the Neshybe School and the Brandon Children's Music Fund following a two-week fellowship with their music department. Doors open at 6:00 and there's a free will donation. Miss Michaela B. Rack Dance is back. Ballet Tap and Hip-Hop classes Tuesday at the Town Hall for ages three to six. Saturday at the Pillar Pilates Studio for ages seven through 12. And April will be a full, will be a full of Town Hall happening. Stay tuned for indoor mini golf, Rusty Deweze, mom prom, and more. That's all from Mr. Moore.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Any questions for Mr. Atherton from the Board? Mr. Goss.
Yeah, I'm curious, and I see our police chief here, so maybe he can chime in on this. I'm curious to hear more about the Brandon Police Dog. I understand from the little bit of reading that I've done that there's different trainings, most likely police go through different trainings than other trainings for the dog. And I'm really, you know, excited to think we might have a dog that can find, help find missing people. Or, you know, I understand they can be trained to do drug sniffing and that kind of thing. I'm a little bit concerned about if they're going to be trained to do bite, it's called bite training. And so I wonder if you could talk to our police dog issue at all?
Not really. We don't have the dog yet. The chief went on, did a fundraiser for it. We had a lot of public support, went over what they were asking for, which is great. And I know that Mike is going to be the one, no, I'm sorry, Aiden's going to be the officer that will have the dog. And that's really all I know right now. There's not a lot more. I'm sure that-
Do you know what kind of training the dog will get?
You'd have to ask the chief on that.
Is he here, Cooley?
I think he's on.
He is, Dave's out there.
Yeah. He could certainly fill you in on that.
Good evening. I definitely have some more information on the K-9 program. It's actually come along very smoothly. To answer your question, I made the decision to have the dog, when we eventually take possession of it, to do tracking and drug work. It will not be trained in patrol work and other drug work or fugitive or suspect apprehension.
No, thank you.
And it'll also, there'll be two separate schools that he'll go to. I want to say they're each six weeks long. We'll probably send the dog to tracking school first and then once that's completed, the dog in the annual will then move on to narcotics detection work school. And that's about another six to eight weeks.
Yeah, thanks for that. Thank you, Tim. Other questions for the, from the Board?
Sorry Seth, actually, chief was wondering if he could just give you kind of an update. It was sort of late in the day on Friday when we were talking about it, so if you wouldn't mind giving him a few minutes to give you guys an update.
Chief Kachajian, thanks so much.
Oh, thank you very much for the time. I just wanted to give everybody an update. I've been here coming into my second month as chief and I just wanted to give everybody, and I plan on doing this every month, an update of our activity and any, any type of programs or any type of issues that we're running into. For the month of February, our officers handled 175 calls for service with two arrests and 18 tickets issued. We've actually also, we're very lucky. We have two new full-time officers that have come on, come on the job and they started a couple of weeks. But it's going to be Officer Nicholas Stenardo and Officer Joseph Menino. Officer Menino was already working the road full-time. He was a part-time officer with us before going to the full-time police academy. And Officer Stenardo is going through his field training process, but as soon as that's completed, we're anticipating the next month or two, hopefully he'll be out on his own patrolling in a full-time capacity as well. As I indicated earlier, the K-9 program's going very well. We have a lot of money. And if I could take this opportunity, I don't, I don't want to use up too much time, but I just wanted to thank Moz Agricultural Service, Phoenix Fuels, Select Board Member Seth Hopkins, and also the Masons, Roberta Haskins from Barry City, and Gary Meadows from Orwell, as well as everybody else who's donated time and wished us well on our endeavors in getting the dog. The outpouring of support has been unbelievable. And, you know, we're very humbled by all the support we're getting at the department and we can't wait to get the program up and running. The only other couple of things, we actually, we interviewed an additional two people today for positions with our department. We're still down one full-time position and we would like to bring on a couple of part-time officers. I conducted interviews today and both went very well for both the full-time and the part-time position. So we're going to be going forward with the background checks on those two individuals. And with our anticipation of putting them through the part-time academy in June, and the officer who's going to be full-time, as soon as a full-time slot opens in the academy, we'll be sending him. But at least for the time being, we'll have that extra person who can work full-time in the town. The other things I wanted to bring up as well is we have increased directed patrols because we've been getting some speeding complaints, especially on Franklin Street. So the officers have been doing an increased amount of directed patrols for speed. And again, that's demonstrated by the amount of tickets we've been producing. We're also trying to educate the public. We're not just trying to issue tickets on this. If we can get people to slow down, that's mission accomplished as far as we're concerned. It's not always about finding people. We're also trying to increase foot patrols in the downtown area. We've had quite a few done this past month. Your officers are at least trying to get out there once or twice per shift, whether it's on the day shift or the night shift, to check doors and businesses. So you'll definitely see an increase in that activity going forward. Also, we'd like to let the public know that Drug Takeback Day is here Saturday, April 30th. And if anybody has any prescription medication they want to dispose of, please stop by the Brandon Police Department and we have a receptacle there and we can take those for you and make sure that they get disposed of properly. Other than that, like I said, going forward, I just want to make sure that everybody's kept well informed about what your police department is doing. And obviously, if there's any questions or if anybody has any concerns, please feel free to give me a call at the police department. I'm always available for all questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. I think the communication is great and glad to see all the initiative you've taken and the success you've had so far in the first couple of months here in Brandon.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Is a hand up in the room? Oh, no, that was someone adjusting something. Anybody on the Board or in the room or on Zoom? Any questions for Chief Kachajian of the Brandon Police Department this evening?
He's out there in the other part of the room.
Okay, thank you again, Chief.
Alright, thank you very much.
Other Board questions for the Town Manager or Town Staff related stuff? Questions from the public in the room tonight for the Town Manager? Questions from those on Zoom tonight or comments? Did we see Sue Gage's hand was up a minute ago?
It was up, but I don't see it up now.
Okay. So we did kind of go at a galloping pace at the beginning of the meeting as we did the routine kind of reappointments and so forth, but there is plenty of time available in all Select Board meetings, including tonight, for public comment and participation. So there's dedicated time, which we're going to start right now on item 10 on the agenda. Dedicated time for public comment and participation, but you can always chime in on any agenda item before or after we're voting. I have, we usually start with the Board. I've got a couple of small things. I do want to express the thanks of the Board to all of those who we did appoint to the various positions tonight for their willingness to serve the community. I want to particularly highlight that there is an open spot on the Brandon Energy Committee due to the resignation of Matthew Orchard. And I want to thank Mr. Orchard for his service. I believe he was on it since the inception of the committee.
I think so.
Yep. And then I wanted to ask the Board how the Board would feel about a pre-Board announcement on Front Porch Forum, basically. So we get the agenda, the Town Staff prepares the agenda on Thursdays and we get it on Fridays. And I wondered if you'd have any objection to me on Front Porch Forum just kind of saying, here's some non-routine items that are coming up at the Monday Board Meeting. Anybody have any feelings about that?
Seems like a good idea.
No objection? I don't think at all. Just kind of one more way to try to let people know that there might be an issue that they're concerned about and if they want to come, they can come, kind of thing. I won't editorialize or anything like that. Alright, so that's my public comment. Any items that the Board has?
Sue has her hand up.
Okay. Sue Gage, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hi there. I'm not putting my video on because I had major dental work today and my whole head is frozen and I'm drooling, so you won't get to see that.
Bernie's in the same situation and he doesn't worry about it.
Hell dental work.
Oh, God, it's awful. And I keep thinking I'm going to bite my tongue and wake up tomorrow morning with a swollen tongue, but I'm trying not to. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure, you know, we, the audit is complete. You guys should all have copies. There are bound copies coming as well, so you can get those. And the management letter, I included that. There was only one item they found. I think they're digging for things now to try to find something. And we pretty much already rectified that, so that's not an issue. It was around making sure that two people signed off on any kind of adjusting entry, which we do for the most part. Occasionally, we miss that two-person check, but there's always two people looking at the financials, so I feel pretty good about it personally. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and this really, I didn't really think about this till Dave did his little spiel, but I just went, attended a meeting of a group that we're calling the Brandon Essential Care Meeting. And it's a bunch of different people in the community. Laura Peterson from Nifty Thrifty, Biata, I can't pronounce her last name, Biata Jensen, I'll say Jensen, from the Department of Health. Tia Polino, who works for the Rutland County Free Clinic, is sort of organizing these meetings. But one of the issues was homelessness and, like you were saying on the emergency report that you do, Dave. So I'll keep you posted on this kind of stuff, but we're, we're trying to see if we can just keep any kind of essential care going. And we are planning a free dental clinic in Brandon for probably April or May, and I'll keep you all posted on that. And this group could morph with Brandon Cares to be a group that might be able to help manage those opiate funds when we get them, and I'll keep you posted on that too. But we're, we're kind of focused on being a wellness group, which is health and wellness. So I just wanted to keep you posted. But we only had, this is only their second meeting, so one of the things we'd really like to do is get a laundromat back in Brandon in some fashion, whether that be a couple of washers and dryers at Nifty Thrifty, that's something potential. We're not sure how it's going to look, but we know that that's a resource that is now missing and it's really important to this area. So we're doing a few things. So I just want to bring you up to speed.
Outstanding. Thank you very much, Sue. And thanks to, please extend the thanks of the Board to all of those that you're working with on these issues.
Will do.
Others on the Board? Anything else that's not on the agenda? Anyone in the room tonight? Anything not on the agenda? Steven Jupiter?
So those of you who don't know me, my name is Steven Jupiter. I live on Park Street. I am currently the President of the Board of the Brandon Museum. And I wanted to come talk to you all tonight about a proposal that I have for the town that I'm hoping you guys will get behind. I've already spoken to Mr. Giles about it. You know, Thomas Davenport invented the electric motor here in Brandon in 1834, but if you just drove through town, you wouldn't know it. There's a lot in town about Stephen Douglas. He's sort of one of the more famous residents of Brandon over the years. Over the years though, his importance has waned, but Thomas Davenport, who invented the electric motor here, is extremely important, especially with the push for electric cars, renewable energy and all of that. However, we don't in Brandon do enough to acknowledge it. And I think it would be a great idea for the town to try to rebrand itself as the birthplace of the electric motor. And I've become aware over this past weekend, why I'm here today, that Senator Leahy, on his way to retirement, is trying to shower Vermont with money. He kind of wants to submit his legacy, he wants to spread as much money around Vermont as he can on his way out the door. And they're, and they're looking for large projects. They don't want, you know, $5,000, $10,000 requests. They're looking for hundreds of thousands to a million dollars, right? Big, big projects. And if we can form some kind of group or committee here in town with the Select Board's backing, we can do a lot to turn Brandon into a hub, a regional hub at the very least, for energy science, energy policy, the history of energy. There's an educational component, economic component, and historic component. So I have a proposal here that I would like to leave with you guys. Just want to run through it very quickly with you. There are some ideas that we've already had. This is all open to suggestion, negotiation. You can add to it, subtract from it. An annual conference in energy, energy science, energy policy to take place here in Brandon. I know there's been a push to make Brandon a destination for conferences more generally. I mean, it's sort of an easy way to put Brandon on the map and bring people to town. You know, they're here for a couple of days. You don't have to provide much but hotel rooms and some food, right? But it gets people, gets Brandon's name out there, gets some money coming through. School, after-school summer programs for kids in energy science. I've spoken to Kevin Thornton, who is on the Board at Arbor Valley about this, and he's behind it. We don't have, you know, the, this application to Leahy's office is due on Friday. There's not going to be a whole lot of time probably to get the whole school board behind it, but there is interest already. Signage, anytime you come in and out of Brandon or Forestale, it should be signs that say "Birthplace of the Electric Motor." Right? It should be clear to anybody coming here that Brandon is more than just a cute little New England town. Important things have happened here. Marketing consultants and materials is something, you know, talking to the Chamber. And I do have, Bernie is here tonight. I've spoken to Bernie and what about this? The Chamber's behind this. Marketing materials, marketing consultants, how to really push Brandon as this energy science hub. Public art pieces, right, to commemorate Davenport. Doesn't have to be just a bronze statue of, you know, some 19th century dude looking stern. It could be something that's a little more exciting, a little more interesting, more modern, you know, in Brandon, in Forestale. He did his work in Forestale, so, you know, that's got to be acknowledged. It's not just a thing that happened in downtown Brandon. He did the work in Forestale. An important exhibit on Davenport at the Brandon Museum. If you go to the museum now, we are in the process of putting this exhibit together. But if you go to the museum now, you're going to see a lot on Stephen Douglas, not a whole lot on Thomas Davenport, and that's got to change. So I have spoken to a bunch of people and organizations about this. The Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Brandon Alliance, the Energy Committee, the Brandon Museum, Mr. Giles, Stephanie Jerome, Bill Moore, and Kevin Thornton. I've spoken to them all about it over the last couple of days and gotten their support. I'd like to leave this with you guys. Couple of thoughts though. We have had an opportunity to speak very briefly with Senator Leahy's team. And they, in order for any of this to happen, you guys, the Select Board's got to be behind it. The town has to be involved. You know, the Brandon Museum, no other organization in town has the authority to ask for some of these things that we'd be asking for. And it's got, the application has to be submitted by Friday, which means that if there is interest in the Select Board, then we would need to meet over the next day or two, kind of hammer out the details, you know, how it would be structured. These are all questions that have to be answered for the application. Where is the money going to be? Who's going to be the recipient of the money? How's it going to be organized and all of that? And with a specific dollar amount, you know, we've got to include that as well. I want to leave this with you guys. My email is on there. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out, let me know. If you have any questions for me now, I'd be happy to answer.
How would you feel if the Select Board were to consider designating the Town Manager and the Town Clerk and the Economic Development Officer as a committee of the town with the authority from the Select Board to make the application on the behalf of the town?
I think that is probably a wise thing.
It's difficult for us to warn a meeting between now and Friday.
In order, in order to get the application in, I mean, there are a lot of things that we can work out after the application is submitted. You know, if we, if they approve the grant, you know, it's a, we, we're looking at spring of 2023 before any money's actually released. So there is, there is quite a bit of time to actually hammer out the details. The Downtown Brandon Alliance has volunteered to act as a pass-through. So, you know, they could, they could be the sponsoring organization. It has to be a nonprofit or the town. It can't be a private individual. So the DBA has offered to act as a pass-through. But the application, and I just found out about it this past weekend, which is why it's a short notice. The application is due on Friday. There's nothing we can do about that.
Just a couple of things, Steve. I'm just kind of sucking this all in as you're telling me. So can the DBA be a pass-through? Because I think we, I think we have to do it. Because I know in all the other, like Community Development Block Grants and things like that, the town's been the pass-through.
We're usually their pass-through.
Right, we're the pass-through, yeah. Which are fine. So that's one thing I was thinking of. The other thing is, are we, are you looking for a letter? I might be speaking out of turn here, but are you looking for a letter of support from the Select Board before Friday to go into a grant application?
There's got to be, there's got to be clear support from the town or I think it's dead in the water.
Well, we can take a vote tonight to authorize the officers-
That's what I was wondering, if we could sort of, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
I don't see downside.
Yeah. And if we do that, I mean, you and I can work on a letter first thing tomorrow and get it in the application.
Well, and so- With your positive support, I might then make the motion that the Board write a letter of support for this to go along with their application. Because I think that that would be a helpful piece to say that the Board supports this effort.
Hold on a second.
So discussion on the motion that the Board write a letter of support for the grant through Senator Leahy's directed spending request initiative in regards to the birthplace of the electric motor? Did you have something, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I did. So I'm familiar, like, this is not the first time that Leahy's done this, so it's certainly probably the last time we get any kind of a crack at this. And from my understanding, from submitting something last year that wasn't funded, you know, a nonprofit, not-for-profit organization can be the head of that. So I don't know if the museum has nonprofit status, if, whether it would be better for the museum to apply with the support of the town and various organizations or to go through the town. I guess, I mean, like, that detail is something that, you know, over the next two to three days, I guess we can work out. But I think, I almost feel like it'd be better if the museum were applying with, with the town supporting versus this town applying for, with the museum supporting, because there's a lot of unknowns as far as like the amounts and the contractors.
Right. What are we doing all the, I mean, I'm just thinking like, for the one we have going currently with the library, I mean, they're a nonprofit, but we still have to be the pass-through because it has to go through the municipality. That's the only reason I was bringing it up, that if it has to be the case, it's, you know.
But we spoke, because of the library, we had an opportunity to speak with Leahy's team today and mentioned this, you know, sort of a last-minute proposal. And their initial reaction was it sounded like something that should come from the town rather than from a nonprofit organization, simply because there's so many things in it that really only the town would be in a place to do, like the signage, the marketing, I mean, which actually might be the Chamber, but certainly signage and public works, you know, like any kind of public sculpture. I mean, that's sort of thing that we, only the town would be in a, you know, the position to authorize. So at the very least, you all have to be an active participant in it on some level. Now, all of that can be worked out. I mean, really, the goal is get the money, then we can figure the rest of it out. There was a proposal, Jack Schneider on the Energy Committee suggested that we might form a nonprofit called the Thomas Davenport Foundation to manage the project, you know, like all the resources. I don't, there's not going to be time between now and Friday to do that. So, you know, in the long term, you know, that is an option to create, you know, an entity, you know, specifically to manage this. Between now and Friday, you have to figure out, like, who's going to sponsor the application? Because that is, that is an item on the application. Who's, and whose name is this actually being submitted?
I'm fine with that. I'm content for the town to be responsible. That's fine.
As you said earlier, to have Dave and...
Dave, Bill, and Sue? Does that sound like a good team?
Yeah, with them figuring out the best rate.
And then they'll use this letter of support in whatever way they feel is best.
Some of those grants do require, like, we had to do, especially through community development block stuff, like, we had to go to trainings and stuff on Fair Labor, Davis Bacon, all that. So we're, that could be a requirement, which we've already got the training on, so it's easy for us to...
You know, I should have brought, I should have brought the application. I had it printed out. It is the easiest application I've ever seen in my life. Honestly, I wish all grants were as simple as this. It's like, he's basically like, dude, we got money. Do you want some? You know, I mean, it's just really filling out some very, very minor, or not minor, but things are easy to answer. The one challenge for us, for y'all, is going to be figuring out there is a section where you have to apply, you know, to specific categories of grant. And, you know, there are some suggestions we, you know, that have been made there. But I think overall, it's really not that complicated. You can see it on Senator Leahy's website. It's not that complicated, an application.
Sue, you're still on Zoom with us? Can you let us know whether you'd be willing to serve in this capacity?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
And the other thing, because, I mean, we do, which could be a selling point, I mean, we do annual audits and annual single audits for federal funds. So, you know, I think that's a selling point, too.
Yeah. We're well looked over, for sure. And we've had a significant amount of federal funds come through the town in the last 10, 12 years. So, Mr. Moore, would you be able to serve with the town clerk? And Mr. Appleton, would you be able to serve? Okay, so I think it's consensus of the Board that the town clerk, the town manager, and the economic development officer are going to be granted the authority from the Select Board to make the application for this grant in whatever terms are most advantageous to the town. Is that accomplish what we need to accomplish? Yeah, and we'll provide a letter.
And we need to vote on that.
Yes. Is that basically the motion, Charlene, that we had?
Yes.
From Tim?
Write a letter.
Okay. Any further discussion? Public input? Focus on Zoom. You have something?
Can we meet, like, tomorrow?
Yes, yes. Yes, absolutely.
I'm around, I have a meeting at 9:00 AM and at 1:00. So...
I'm sorry, what was that?
I have a meeting at 9:00 AM and a meeting at 1:00.
All right, just give me a time and I'll be here.
Anytime after 10:30.
Let's put 10:00.
10:00, 10:00 is going to push it, but I'll do my best.
10:15.
You'll be there at 10:30, so 10:15 is fine.
All right, 10:15 is it. All right, thank you all very much.
Sue, did you catch that? They kind of agreed amongst the three that are in the room here about 10:15 tomorrow to convene?
Yeah, that'd be good. I may be down, I may be the only one in the office, depending on how Luanne's feeling. So maybe we can meet downstairs, in the best case, if you guys don't mind.
That's fine.
Downstairs conference room, town office.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, that's unanimous. Awesome. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And best wishes for success. I think that is, we could rename the whole town if you want.
Leahyville.
I was thinking Davenport. Further public items not on the agenda? Anybody in the room? Anybody on Zoom with items not on the agenda tonight that they'd like to raise at the Board meeting? Okay, the major item then is item 13. The town's zoning and code enforcement officer has raised the profile of retail cannabis licensing. And Mr. Appleton was kind enough to forward some guidance, which Sue Gage was kind enough to forward to him from the Vermont Cannabis Control Board. And we've got copies of it tonight. Do you want me to just start off with a couple of things I noticed in the handout?
Sure, sure.
All right, so on page five, this is just maybe five little items I want to just kind of check out here. Page five, using the page numbers down in the lower right corner. This is the State Cannabis Control Board. So here they say, under B, cannabis establishments are subject to the same zoning rules of municipal ordinances that apply to any business. And you can't make regulations, at the bottom line there, you can't make additional regulations greater than they would, than any other business has to follow. On page six, it says, about two-thirds of the way down in the paragraph, that's just a single sentence, "The local commissioners may be members of the municipality's legislative body." I think in the same way that this evening, we designated the Select Board as the Board of Health, the Board of Liquor Control Commissioners, the Board of Sewer Commissioners, and the Housing Board of Review, we could maybe designate ourselves the Cannabis Control Board. And item seven, just for matters of interest, cannabis operations are not agriculturally exempt, and cannabis is not a commercial product in Vermont. And number eight, the very last paragraph, "There's no approved fee for this license yet," is what it appears to be saying. Like, we can license them, but we can't collect a fee to do it. But on page nine, at the top, item C, "We will receive a 1% local option tax on retail sales of cannabis that occur in our town." That's what I took away from that as being the...
And it's funny, because I had my hope on page five to get ready for this, and you started right there, so...
The rest of it's kind of...
Yeah, so Jeff did get a response back from the League. And he actually sent it out with myself and the Pittsburgh Town Manager and the West Rutland Town Manager included because of the zoning in all those towns. And actually, I spoke to both of them today about this and sent this guidance for municipalities along to them as well. They hadn't seen it. So I think it looks like the best route for this, and even from what the League said, is, you know, they don't have a model policy, and they refer Jeff to this. So it seems like, right now, the best way to move forward is exactly as Seth just said, is just create a Board of cannabis control, like we do liquor control, and do it the same way. If you want to. I mean, it says we don't have to, but...
So the only thing is, though, if we don't create our local cannabis control commission, then...
It's around the state.
Right, only the state will have any kind of oversight of an operation in our town.
I think it's a good thing to do just because of the way we do it for everything else.
I agree.
As Seth pointed out, it's an opportunity to make sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are topped and the Bots are checked.
So...
Is there a motion?
Yeah, is there a motion to designate the Brandon Select Board as the Brandon Cannabis Control Commission?
Hey, a second.
Any discussion on that?
It's a good idea.
Public input on that? Zoom input on that? Again, this does not allow the town or the Select Board in particular as the Cannabis Control Commission. It does not allow us to create further regulations than the state has outlined or that our local zoning ordinance already covers for any type of business. Mr. Moore?
I mean, I'm glad you guys are seemingly taking a, you know, quick action on this, because we do have people looking into it, so...
Well, I think the town, the town was a year ahead of many votes, right? I mean, the town voted in 2021 to permit the retail sale of cannabis in Brandon. So I think that the town, and that was by vote of the town's people, not by vote of the Select Board. So I think that the town's people have spoken that this is something that they want done decently and in good order in their town. So I think that this will be one further step that we can assure that the conditions that we're placing on the businesses reflect the values of the community. And we get to have our input oversight.
Is there some way that we could, the Board could adopt maybe this guidance, only because it does have...
Yeah, we could do it in a separate motion or as an amendment to that motion.
But then it's something that we can actually...
I guess I'm wondering what you mean by adopt, because it seems like, as Seth just said, by de facto, we are bound by the laws of the state.
Yep. So Jeff has got many phone calls. Like, we didn't get any last year in this world because, you know, there was nothing going on yet with legislation.
And now it's coming.
So just to have this and say, well, the town has sort of taken this as their guide, you know, has adopted this as their guidance for... I think it's helpful for him to be able to discuss this and present this to folks.
I tend to agree, because without that, we don't have any local ordinance adopted. And I don't think that we're in a position to be creating a specific local ordinance of cannabis. But if we just affirm that we're going to operate as outlined by the State Cannabis Control Board, it's at least being clear to someone who might want to operate a cannabis business in Brandon, what their rules are going to be. Because otherwise, we don't have rules. We just have a board. You know what I'm saying?
Okay. I'm still just trying to wrap my head around what we're, what we're passing as far as guidance, as far as limits, saying, you know, we will do this and we won't do that.
Well, I think there's some good things in here, Tim, like the definition of, like, buffer zones, so that when Jeff is meeting with people, that, you know, you can't have one within 500 feet of school property. It's not ag-exempt. There's different criteria for retail versus growing. You know, there's, I think there's some good guidelines in there that would really kind of help folks out.
The analogy I think is, I'm coming to in my head is that when we went to do animal control, we realized that the state already enables the animal control officer to do certain things. And all we're really saying in our ordinance is, you know, we authorize our person to be an animal control officer. And it seems like similarly here, they aren't making any new rules. They aren't making any new limitations. They're just saying, you know, what the state has said we do, we're going to do. And so I'm not sure if this has any teeth, is my point. It seems like this has...
I may be misunderstood. I was looking more for, like, this would be like, we erase guidance and put ordinance on here. Like, use it exactly as that, that it's guidance for us and for the people that our zoning administrators are going to meet.
Okay.